Testing.
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 All right, good evening. I'm Sarah Marshall and seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling this meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at six thirty-two on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Would everyone at the table please introduce themselves for the public?
Jennifer Shaw.
Irv Rhodes.
Dr. Z, Superintendent.
Thank you. Our first order of business is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Please come to the mic and state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Vincent O'Connor. I live at one seventy-five Summer Street in Amherst. I'm here to ask the the school committee, the Amherst School Committee, to request of the manager and the council to appropriate a sufficient amount of money to reemploy the library professionals in the public elementary schools. The reason I'm doing that is because I have, through the offices of Senator Conoverford, gotten the information about what additional school aid has been received by the town and partial information about the deficits that have been also addressed to the town in terms of education. We received seventy-three thousand dollars more than the manager's estimate on page sixty-four for chapter seventy money. Charter tuition reimbursement was thirty-four thousand less than the manager's estimate, but school choice tuition was in excess of the manager's estimate by a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So that's a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars additional in education money from the legislature. Additionally, the the town's cherry sheet assessments were almost a hundred thousand dollars less, and two of the largest components of that, those assessments, are educational components, but the manager's estimate, which was a hundred thousand dollars more than what was imposed on the town on the cherry sheet, were not broken down, so I can't give you that estimate. And I just want to say with regard to the elementary school library situations, there are eleven libraries in town, five of them are public school libraries, three of them are elementary school libraries. For six hours a day, at least two hundred children attend our three elementary schools, and we only have librarians. If they're out or sick, or they have a big library day, they don't have help. And this issue was, has been discussed, it's pretty thoroughly understood that these library assistants are absolutely necessary for the proper function of the elementary school libraries. More children use that libraries by probably an order of magnitude than go to the Jones Library Children's Section, and it is very important that the librarians at the elementary schools have proper assistance during the school year, and people who can take their place when there's an illness or whatever. So I would appreciate the school committee, if my figures, which are new, maybe new to you, are not sufficient, to inquire, get things in writing, and make a proper request to the manager and the council to provide additional resources, or to work with the superintendent to use the available resources to employ library professionals to really make sure that the elementary school libraries function successfully for all students in the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had no written, excuse me, no emailed public comment or voice messages. All right, my update, I I'm sorry that we're not able to project the documents we will be talking about this evening, but they are all attached to the agenda for this meeting and therefore are publicly available. My chair's update is very brief, and perhaps Dr. Z will mention this same item. I just want everyone to know that the first day celebration will be this coming Sunday evening, four-thirty to six-thirty at Kendrick Park, and it's a great opportunity for students and families to meet principals and our new superintendent. And I will be there. I've got to make myself a school committee badge so people can button hole me and and tell me their thoughts if they like. So I hope to see some other school members, committee members there if possible. Second of all, at the retreat, the three committee retreat we had a few weeks ago, the superintendent and her executive assistant, Ms. Douglas, said they would like, at least for the moment, school committee chairs to take over the posting of meetings, those announcements, and that the committees will keep the minutes. Given the workload in the central office, I'm happy to do that. So I have posted tonight's meeting. I've learned how to do that on the town bulletin board. Still learning the details of whom I need to contact to make sure everything is functioning at these meetings. And so I hope we can take turns preparing the minutes. No one has to take notes at the time, of course, because these meetings are recorded. And that's all I have to say. Any questions about those two items? Yes?
Regarding taking minutes, in the past, in past years, we had a, like, paid, part-time person who produced minutes. Is that something we would consider? I mean, I don't even think this person was a school, I am blanking on her name, Myleene maybe. I don't even think she was a school employee. She was just someone whose job was to take school committee minutes. Is that something we would consider?
Well, I would consider it. And that was for this committee or all the region also?
It was for all of them. I don't know about Palom, but Amherst and the region.
Okay, well, I will speak with the superintendent about whether there's funds for that, so.
Thank you.
Any comment or anything? Okay, all right. Next, are there any announcements from committee members? Jennifer?
Just that AFSMI bargaining continues and is going, moving along, I would say, moving along well. We don't have a estimated completion date yet, but we are continuing to meet with AFSMI.
Okay, thank you. Irv, anything?
Nothing.
All right, superintendent's update.
Sure, good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to start off with some great news, and I want to start by thanking my family center team, Dr. Marta Grovvara, Mildred, Dwayne, and the volunteers. This last week, Thursday and Friday, was the backpack giveaway. We also want to thank the Amherst Police Department and their team. It was a great showing both days. We gave out about over seven hundred backpacks, equivalent across all three districts, and, you know, Amherst has a larger, larger amount of elementary school students. It was great to engage with the families and the students and to see my team doing such. Amherst PD gave out ice pops, icicles, and they checked car seats as well. So it was really a great two days, and again, thank you to Marta, Dwayne, and Mildred for heading that up and making sure that that was able to be a well-promoted and thorough activity. As we engage the community, yes, we will have our first day celebration on Sunday, so thank you for that. At Kendrick Park, starting at four-thirty, I will be there with my team, and we'll have representatives from different community stakeholders that are coming out, and each have a table to engage. We also recently had a great new teacher, new educator, new educator orientation today. It was wonderful welcoming everyone to the greatest profession that there is, and just again, charging them with knowing that they're not in this alone, but more so that we're in this together to shift and and impact lives of the children in all three districts. I am excited about convocation on Friday. All staff is going to be present. We'll be having convocation this year at UMass. It's going to be a little bit different. We'll have a keynote speaker giving out some awards, but it's really to set the tone. We had a great admin week. There were presentations and trainings, and we engaged the the leadership, the district instructional leadership team around just what the expectations are and where we can move forward in all three districts and in Amherst. I know that there are some shifts and changes that are coming forth, and so one of them is we did some updates to our bullying policy. We looked at it and we realized that there was an issue with accountability in the policy around timelines, and so we've updated the policy. And not only have we updated the policy, but we've also launched a new bullying platform. The previous platform just wasn't end-user or end-user-friendly or district-friendly, and so we have a new platform. It's called Brim, and so that will be fully rolled out for the start of the school year. To be fully transparent, there was a test run over the weekend, and I was like, wait a minute, school hasn't started, and I'm getting a bullying report already. So it's it's triggering not just the respective schools, but the district leads as well, that their bullying report has been filed, and so it's one where we're again promoting that accountability throughout the district. And in that, it's the development of the new Mental Health and Behavioral Services Division. So as previously spoken about, Ms. Maureen Fleming was under Student Services, and so kind of came in and shifted that with everything that's happened and with the charge that I have set forth in around healing of the districts, and so she's now leading the bullying. She's receiving her training, and she'll be leading the Title IX, and we'll be rolling out what that will look like for the districts as well. Free breakfast and lunch for students, so we want to make sure that everyone takes great, great care. We did have a push for a Title I waiver for Crocker Farm. What we are noticing is that when we shifted to the free lunch, that information, the demographic information, was no longer collected, which impacts our data collection around Title I. We did apply for a waiver, so we're waiting for formal notice, and I think we got informal that we would not receive the waiver, so we're waiting for the formal notice, the final no. But we are still researching what are additional funding sources, grants that we can apply for to move forward with. Keeping in line with finances, I know that finances, especially in Amherst, is a big, it's a focus, and so the two divi, three, three things that I have kind of pinpointed as priorities in this quarter is, one, auditing the Human Resources Office and their processes and operations, two, auditing the Business Budget Office and their process and operations, and the budget itself, and three, formalizing and making sturdy our Mental Health and Behavioral Services Division. And so we have identified quotes for auditors to come in and look at our internal audit and look at our processes. We're waiting for one more quotation, and we will definitely keep the committee update on that in terms of our budgets and where we are with those steps. I wanted to say, I have a lot of updates. I just want to make sure we hit it all. Licensure, when I did a couple of Joes with Paul, there was a conversation around licensure, and so one of the key things as the leader of the district, not just with licensure but evaluation, we've been speaking about this is a professional atmosphere. We're preparing students for life, and we're expecting them to meet whatever qualifications they need to to graduate, and so as professionals, we too are meeting licensure. So we have been doing a dive into who's licensed from who's not, and analysis into how many waivers have been granted, and making shifts and changes within the district around that. So you will see some changes in terms of leadership, but also in terms of teachers, in terms of granting of waivers, and where that's going to move forward to. And I wanted to say thank you to this committee, and I'll be saying thank you to all the committees for a wonderful joint committee meeting, and the opportunities to sit through that retreat and have a clear understanding of both our roles and how we plan to work together to just impact the students and effect change in the districts. And so it's really, really great as we prepare for the start of school next week. There are some, I do have some deferred maintenance concerns as I walk through the schools, as I engage with the schools, and it is our hope that we can present the picture of the impact of the maintenance portion, the need for intervention within our buildings. But right now, we are, I am working, I met with our facilities assistant director this morning to speak about my expectations for next week. And we're going to get there, so thank you, and that is the end of my update. If there are any questions?
Any?
Jennifer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just sort of, I guess I was taken by surprise in relationship to Crocker Farm and the free lunch, or free meals, Title I.
Title I, mhm.
I thought that all the meals was, for all the schools, was separate from Title I.
No, so it is. So what happens is, in the past, the in, the the information that was needed to determine, I guess, the school, the data that needed to be collected, was also data that was collected from the form to determine if students would qualify for the free lunch. When lunch was made free for everyone, there was no longer a use of that form, that form, that data was no longer being collected. And so in in what I have learned in my entry is that the demographic data that is is being used kind of now disqualifies because we don't have enough of the percentage of students needed to qualify at at Crocker Farm for Title I. And so that that's where that information comes in. We're going to work on it. There are some suggested forms that we could possibly share with the community to gather that information for the upcoming year and start to plan ahead, but we have to look at the fact that the demographics, even though it might not be Title I, but I do think that there are other titles that we possibly could, and probably not the entitlement grants, but we might need to go towards competitive grants to make sure that we can still do adequate programming at our schools.
All right.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I understand that Crocker Farm situation a little bit better. So I understand what you're saying, that because we no longer, because now everyone gets free free lunch, we no longer have to collect the information about who qualifies for free lunch, but that happened a while ago, or rather, the free lunch has been for everyone a while ago, and it it affects lots of schools, not just Crocker Farm. So like, how is this, how, how, what's happening at Fort River and Wildwood, and why are those schools are not experiencing the same problem, and how are other schools or other districts managing this?
So Fort River actually has a waiver that they, that they actually, that I walked into, so I did ask those questions. Fort River actually has that existed waiver that they are currently grandfathered in for one more year. When that waiver expires and that one more year, we will be in the same position with Fort River that we are with Crocker Farm. So it's really about the demographics and not just, it's not even about, like, again, this, the data collected on the school lunch form was salary data, you know, background. It was to determine if you qualified for school lunch, you had to look at your income base and all of those things. That information is no longer directly being collected. I have been working with the grants team to determine what it is and looking at it, but again, I'm coming in mid-process, so right now, it's solving the issue and putting out the information as to how do we do that. We send it out for community feedback. We shared, shared what we were doing with parents. We posted it, and now we submitted it to DESI. What I need to look into for the upcoming year is what, what data needs to show what, like, what are the gaps? What do we need to collect? How do we engage the community in collecting it so that we can see the impact, and still figuring out in the neighboring districts around who will also have gone through this, what they have done differently? So right now, it was kind of getting to the end of the process so that we can get to the end of this current process to begin a new one.
Okay, thanks. So can I have a follow-up to that? I think that this, so the information that was not collected, I think that also feeds into our foundation budget by, I could be wrong because it's so complicated, by by determining the, like, percentage of poverty level or above or below, you know, the distribution of income levels in schools then has an effect on what the state will give us in our, so is there also that effect of not having collected this data?
That that is the effect. That that's the effect of.
But Title I is a separate.
No, Title I is based on that income and that poverty level. That's one of the indicators in there, and and so what we're looking at is, are we missing students? Is there data that we're not collecting? Like, what are we doing? And data collection is something that we're we're pushing this year, because we can't tell our story because we don't know, that we don't have the data, especially in a centralized place. Right now, if there's data that's needed, IS would have to pull it, generate it, and create it into a report. So what we, what I've been working with them is to identify a dashboard platform where we can have the data already visualized, already easily accessible, so we can pull and have access to it, instead of having them stop to go and generate it for us.
Did you have another question?
I do, yes, go ahead. On a different topic. You mentioned auditing the HR office and the budget office and the budget. That sounds like a lot, and so you're saying you're going to hire external auditors to do this?
The budget.
The budget, okay.
The budget. The the budget and the budget process. How was it developed? What's happening? To 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 come in and kind of strip back on the internal controls that we're missing? What do we need to do? We need a clear, neutral expert eye to come in and say, here are some suggestions for improving this process. Here are some things that need to be done differently.
So you're going to hire external auditors to do that?
Yes.
For all three budgets?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And what about the HR office? What does it mean to audit an HR office?
Go in, look at their processes. We've already started by streamlining hiring an HR director, so we looked at the, first of all, the organization of the office. Initially, when I came in, there were two HR administrators. There was no clear delineation of who reported to who, what needed to happen, so that was the first thing that needed to go in and be corrected. Now that that's done, I'm working with the the new director, Ms. Ortiz, to firm up on, one, where are current processes that need to be outlined? What are the gaps? How do we, what are we currently doing that we can do differently? For example, employee investigations, how does that need to be handled? Who's, what's the role? How are we going to make up? And so a lot of what was experienced prior to looking at that and saying, what were the gaps that caused us to be where we are now, and how do we get there differently? There are some other employee issues that, you know, we are handling at the same time as well. So auditing it is really going in, asking the critical questions, knowing what needs to happen, looking at it, and then I'm doing that for every department. I'm going through every division and saying, okay, what are, like, tell me what you do. What's the makeup? How do you support the the districts? What, you know, why, why is this person here? Why does this person do that? And it's critical because as we're trying to replace individuals, you know, fill positions, we're also in the middle of a budget crunch, and I don't want to be replacing individuals when we have some individuals who are underutilized, and we could shift the work to them in a division, or we may need to recreate, based on our current needs and current situation, how divisions have been operating prior. There's, there, one thing is that multiple, the the work isn't where it should be, in in a lot of what I've observed so far and what I've interacted with so far. So there may be a process that should be housed in HR but was housed in the budget office, or a process that that should be housed in Student Services that was housed in the Family Center. So it's really looking at who do we have, what are we doing, and that's what, I'm calling that an audit of all of the divisions, and going through and saying, how do we streamline our organization so that we can support our students?
Great, thank you.
I have a question about, maybe it was your first, one of the first points, talking about the harassment policy, or maybe it was bullying policy.
Bullying, mhm.
But this committee develops policy. Were you talking about the bullying, bullying implementation plan?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because we, yes, we have the policy on our agenda for, all right, thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you, great. All right, next, approve minutes from our June eighteenth meeting, if the committee members had a chance to look at them. Did everyone look? All right. Does anyone want to offer edits?
No edits for me.
I had none. All right. Someone like to move that we approve these? I will move that we approve the minutes of our June eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, that was easy. All right, next, warrant report.
I do have many warrants, however, my iPad won't connect to the Wi-Fi for some reason, so I won't be able, I can't read them, so I'll save them for next time. Sorry.
Well, if if you get it working this evening, go ahead and let me know, so it would save some time probably to get those out of the way. Okay, accept gifts, then. We do have some gifts.
I would be happy to make a motion.
Sure, and let me, I'll just, yeah, go ahead. You you read them aloud, right?
Yes, I move that we accept the following gifts from Martha Olver, number nine-nine-six-seven-three-nine, number nine-nine-six-eight-two-three, number nine-nine-six-eight-oh-one, and number nine-nine-six-eight-four-three to support Crocker Farm at principal discretion, forty dollars, from various anonymous to support Comanate's summer camp donations given with registration, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars for a cash total of two-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and from Amherst Education Foundation, a grant for Fort River Community Building and Restorative Practices, three-thousand-one-hundred-fifty dollars, from Amherst Education Foundation, a grant for Crocker Farm Gymnastics Mats, seven thousand dollars, and from Amherst Education Foundation, a grant for all elementary schools zooming in sixth grade microscopes and microscope cameras, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars for a cash total of twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars.
Wonderful. Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Thank you to all those organizations and individuals for for their gifts. That's, that's great to have that support for our schools. All right, so on to our new business. I think we may have all received an email six weeks or two months ago from a woman in the community who is, well, wishes to establish a private elementary school, and she contacted me about the process, and I knew nothing about And she contacted me about the process, and I knew nothing about the process. So I reached out to our um, to our uh attorney. And he has told me the following, um, that first of all, there under Mass General Law, we do, school committees do have the obligation to approve a private school when it is satisfied that the instruction in all the studies required by law equals in thoroughness, in efficiency, and in the progress made therein, that in the public schools in the same town. That's the obligation abbreviated somewhat. Um, and that essentially, that obligation is stated in our policy manual, uh in our policy LBC, Relations with Other Agencies, Private Schools. However, that policy does not lay out any process by which we would do that and determine whether approval is um is appropriate. Um, so Attorney Terry also referred us to our policy IHBG, which um pertains to evaluating uh the curriculum for homeschooled um children. And that is more detailed and lays out some criteria um by which the proposed curriculum is to be evaluated. And it also specifies that the superintendent or the superintendent's designees will um evaluate all that um curriculum and and proposal and um develop a recommendation for the school committee. So what um we are proposing to do, or I am proposing that we do, um, is the following. So I'll move and hopefully have it, we'll have a second, and then we can talk about it. So moved to refer any application or inquiry regarding establishment of an elementary school in Amherst to the superintendent, who shall establish an application and review process to include, at a minimum, those factors referenced in policy IHBG and make a recommendation to the school committee. Sarah, second?
I'm gonna second, but we need to discuss this.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Irv, why don't you start?
Um, as I understand it, the state uh requires the uh school committee to approve the establishment of a private school, that's what my understanding is. And that the curriculum for such school be approved by the superintendent. And what I'm reading here is you're saying for the superintendent to approve the curriculum. And then send that approval back to us. And then we approve that, which is in essence approving the application for the private school. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, except we don't take any, I mean, if we, if we vote in favor of this motion, then essentially, the whole matter is on the superintendent's plate. And she and the applicant or, you know, her team um reviews what that individual is proposing as curriculum and will look at the factors in by which the curriculum for home-educated students um that they have to meet and decide whether this proposed school provides an a- an an equivalent, if not more, education um compared to our elementary schools. The superintendent is the educational leader for the district. So I think it's appropriate for the superintendent to conduct that evaluation and um make a recommendation to us. Jennifer?
I am strongly opposed to this motion because I think the state law is clear and that there's also a DESI advisory on this, that this is the school committee's responsibility, obligation, and purview, not the superintendent's. I think our superintendent has enough to do without evaluating a private school. I I don't wanna put any more work on her plate that doesn't benefit our stu- our our students at all. So I I I'm 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 disagreeing with what Irv said. I don't know if 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 you said it this way, that like, the superintendent approves the curriculum and we approve the school. I don't think there's two different things. I think the state law says the school committee, uh the school committee has the authority to de- approve or disapprove a private school. This is from the um, from the DESI advisory. So I don't think there's two things to approve. I think it's the school committee's job to do that. And the DESI advisory indicates that that there's actually a, I don't I don't know if you sent this or if I just found it from Googling, but it says, may a school committee delegate its authority to approve or disapprove a private school to the superintendent or another school administrator? No, the the school committee cannot. However, the school committee may designate the superintendent or another school administrator to visit the private school, review documentation, and make a recommendation. Again, I don't really want, I'm sorry, I I don't know what Dr. Z has any opinions. I don't want her spending, I don't want our superintendent spending her time doing that. It's our job and we should be the ones doing it. And we don't have a process. I don't, as far as I know, we haven't done this before, we haven't done it in recent memory. I think what I, my suggestion would be to empower the chair and vice chair to be the ones to determine what the fa- what the, I I mean, I don't know, to come up with a process, determine what the factors are, see what the, talk to this school person, see what they're planning to submit. It sounds like they're at the very early stages, so maybe they don't have anything to submit yet. But I would like the school committee to do this and not the superintendent.
I'm going to disagree because um, let's see, our pol- our policy says, the second paragraph, in accordance with Mass State Law, Chapter seventy-six, Section one, the school committee will approve a s- private school when it is satisfied that the instructional program of the school equals that of the town's public schools in thoroughness, efficiency, and progress made. But as our attorney pointed out, this gives no process for doing that. I also think, I don't think we're qualified, that this committee is qualified to make that determination. I think so, and it was the attorney's um recommendation that we refer the evaluation of the curriculum to the whatever, to the superintendent. And not, it's not for the superintendent to approve or disapprove, but to report back to us with a recommendation about, yes, I recommend that the school committee approve this application or not because it's it's educationally deficient.
All right.
And I I totally get that, oh, you know, that the superintendent has an awful lot of work on her plate. On the other hand, this is, we don't have a choice about not addressing this request.
This is not either-or situation. It should re- should be a joint, a joint process. I agree with what Jennifer's saying. We don't need to put a lot more on on Dr. Z's plate than we need to. We uh, as I read, the law says, and and I read the DESI part, portion of it, says that the school committee is charged with approving that application. Now, obviously, the application is also uh part and parcel of the curriculum. Because if the curriculum is not satisfactory, then obviously, the school is not sa- cannot be approved. So I would recommend that we uh do a joint process with the superintendent of doing two things. One, uh getting from the um ADHers their proposed curriculum. All right? They ha- they present that proposed curriculum to us. Um, when I say us, I mean, a joint, joint lead, us and the superintendent. And then we, obviously, are not in the superintendent's shoes. We don't have the resources to do that. Whereas the superintendent's office does have instructional people who could look at the curriculum and say, yes, this is the curric- it meets the qualifications of the curriculum that we currently have in the Amherst Elementary Schools.
May I just say, when I, when I say the superintendent, it's obviously, or the superintendent's designees, I don't mean that the superintendent personally has to do this review. Because it seems like you're proposing exactly what the motion proposes, is in essence, is to give it to the experts, our educational experts, to evaluate. But yes, Dr. Z, please.
Um, it's very, it's it's wonderful to sit in here to third, third-person review of the conversation and think through it. Um, so concerns that I have right now, um, and I don't have the timeline for, I I was also on the email. Um, one, I don't have the current timeline as to when the school would be open and how far ahead they are in the process. I do think that the committee should come together and outline a process that you would like followed. Because what I am hearing is a suggestion from Irv, a suggestion. So it's not really, the motion is really the process. What is the process that the committee would like follow to approve a private school? And is that process that you come and do a presentation? And once they present it to the committee and they lay out, then there is a curriculum review to make sure that it's age-appropriate. Then there is this, like, that part needs to be, because in the policy for homeschool, that's what's missing, the process part. So I actually would suggest that the committee meets and reviews the policy, updates the current policy to ensure a process, and then say what the role of the superintendent would be in that process, to be very minimal. Because right now, I also have a very scant um central office team that I am trying to restructure and um basically turn, you know, juice out of water because I'm looking at the positions that I have um to to try and bring in or meet the gaps. For example, we have our strategic equity and inclusivity. No one's speaking to you, Siri. Um, strategic equity coach who um was is was brought in because, again, all of our diversity issues that are occurring, but that came as a s- at a sacrifice of of it. So I do think that what is clearly missing from the policy is the process the committee would like followed. And innately, what you would be asking me to do as a superintendent is to create a process within a policy um gap that 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 would speak to what the committee has to do. I can outline the role of the committee in that role. So I would actually think that this needs to go backwards to where you clarify the policy, put the process in there, outline what the superintendent would need to do within the process of the policy, and then we go from there.
Jennifer?
So, just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting we delegate the responsibility to the superintendent, and I wasn't suggesting that we do not comply with the request. What I'm suggesting is that the responsibility for this is squarely on the shoulders of the school committee. And Sarah, you said something to the effect of, like, we're not qualified to be able to judge a curriculum. But it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter that we're not qualified because the law says the school committee does it. There are no qualifications to be a school committee member, other than being a registered voter and getting enough votes. It's our job to do this. If we need to figure out how to do it, that it's it's on us. I don't wanna see, I really don't wanna see the superintendent or any central office staff devote any time to evaluating a private school's curriculum, something that doesn't benefit our students at all. It's not in the best interest of our students to devote any central office staff to evaluating a private school's curriculum. So it's our job, we need to get it done. However we do that is up to us, but I, it it, I just, it makes, it I, it just, it makes me really, it makes me really uncomfortable. It feels really icky. Um, yeah, I think we should do the legwork and we should, we should come to our own conclusion. We don't, we it, we we can designate the superintendent to make a recommendation, but we're not required to, and I don't think we should.
Well, if I understood um um part of what, well, Dr. Z's point is that we, either the, either Amherst School Committee, develop a m- a process that is incorporated into a policy that applies only to to Amherst. Or we could send this up to the policy subcommittee that could develop a process in case somebody comes to the, wants to start a middle school, wants to start one in Pelham. I mean, um, we could just do it for ourselves. Yep?
So.
Um, the um s- policy subcommittee is a subcommittee of the regional school committee, not of this school committee. Also, um, according to the, it's either in the DESI or the um, the state, I think it was in the DESI advisory, the school committee that approves the s- a private school's application is the school committee for the town where the school will be. So it wouldn't be, uh, so it, even if, even if that, even if those students wouldn't be attending the school. So even if this school was a secondary school, it would still be approved by us, the Amherst School Committee, because we're the school committee of the town where the school would be held. It wouldn't be the regional school committee. It's um, it's the school committee in the town where the school will be taking, will be, will be located. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say, you know, we're a, we're a K through six school district. And even if the school was gonna be a seven through twelve, it would still be in on our responsibility because we're the Amherst School Committee. Anyway, um, so the the policy subcommittee is something I wanna talk about later. But I, an- anyway, I um, I I, so I I would be in favor of uh the chair and the vice chair or a subcommittee of the Amherst School Committee developing a policy and process for this. I would want the policy and process to not include superintendent, central office. But I'm I'm okay with 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 doing that. And it doesn't seem like we have an application to to consider at this point. Um, so I I I'm, I would be okay with that.
Right, the, let me just say, the applicant wants to know what the process is. And if the answer is, we don't have a process and we'll develop one, you know, as soon as we can, um, then that's, that'll be the answer. Irv?
I agree with Dr. Z in terms of the, I agree with Dr. Z in in the relationship to the need for a process. We need a process. I also agree with Jennifer that that falls squarely on us. Uh, I also agree with Jennifer that it should be a committee of some kind to develop that process. All right? So I also agree with her that the chair and the vice chair should take that on in relationship to developing a process, which brings me back to a motion.
Aim, you you would like to make a new motion, then?
Yes, we have to dispose of this motion on the floor.
Can I just withdraw it with your consent? Because you seconded, is that right? You seconded it?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, all right, so, all right, the motion is withdrawn. And you want, wish to make a new motion?
Yeah, I make a mo- I move that the um, school committee, Amherst School Committee, appoint the chair and the vice chair to um develop a process for um establishment of private schools in Amherst.
I will second, but can I make a friendly amendment? Um, develop a recommended process to present to the full committee for the full committee's approval?
I agree.
That we draft a process?
Yeah.
How about we draft a process?
Yes.
All right, so the. So the motion is that the chair and vice chair draft a process for the establishment of a private school in Amherst? Okay? Any more discussion? Okay. Uh, all in favor? Three, unanimous, okay. All right, thank you. All right, next is to have the second read of two policies that we first reviewed uh at a joint meeting with the region in June, I think, or maybe May, I don't remember. And um Jennifer is on that policy subcommittee, so I think we'll present uh these revised or proposed revisions. Go ahead.
So, sorry, just refresh my memory. The first time this committee looked at it was at a joint meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and and was that, sorry, was that joint meeting joint because of the policies?
No, I think it, I think it, no, I think it may have been the state, no, that was the, um, I think it may have been in c- in one of the meetings um in which we reviewed the assessments of the interim superintendent.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if Amherst School Committee adjourned before we.
I don't know, because I I was sorry at the time that Pelham had adjourned because they're gonna have to.
So, I mean, I think it's important to know if this is the first or second read for the Amherst School Committee.
Well, I'm pretty confident it's the second read.
Okay. Um, sorry, I'm just.
Was this presented at the region also?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, at a joint meeting.
At a joint meeting?
Yeah.
All right, so, and that was, was that the first read of it?
For, yes, for both, and we're meeting, we're meeting before the region is taking it up, so we might as well give our input.
Um, I have a question about policies in general, but maybe we should just go through this one first, to go through these two first.
Yeah, your choice.
Well, so the policy subcommittee that dra- drafted this policy. So, the policy Subcommittee that dra- drafted this policy is a Subcommittee of the Regional School Committee. It's not a Subcommittee of the Amherst School Committee or the Pelham School Committee. I have gotten mixed messages in the past when I've asked. Do these policies apply to all the dist- all three districts? And I've gotten, and and some people say yes, and some some others have told me the Amherst. District doesn't have a policy Subcommittee, so we don't have policies, which doesn't make any sense, of course. So, the um there, so, you know. I'm on the policy Subcommittee, which again is a Subcommittee of the Regional School Committee, but I haven't had my Amherst hat on. As a member, and and I'm not the Amherst School Committee representative on that committee, I'm just on the Subcommittee. I haven't had my Amherst hat on, I mean, it's always on, right, but I haven't thought about it from an elementary perspective. I I just, I I because because that Subcommittee is a Subcommittee of the Regional School Committee, I've just been thinking of it in terms of middle school and high school, so. Um I've, i- i- so, I think this is the first time that I can think of, maybe you can correct me, that the Amherst School Committee. Has needed to approve a policy that came out of that policy Subcommittee. I don't think we have approved policies in the past.
Well, just since January, as long, you know, as long we've had.
We haven't really.
We did, hmm, public comment.
Right, so that that was one where the policy Subcommittee came up with this new public comment policy for meetings. The policy Subcommittee came up with that for the Regional School Committee, and then Amherst just adopted it. We you you just put it into place without us actually voting on it, which is fine. But I just, I think that my, we need to figure out a way for policies to apply to Amherst and the region. Also Pelham, although, you know, Pelham's gonna do it, Pelham's gonna have to have a say in that. I want to talk about having a Subcommittee that is a policy Subcommittee, that is a joint committee, a joint. A policy Subcommittee that is a joint Subcommittee of all three committees. Not just a Subcommittee of the Regional School Committee. Because the Subcommittee's, the policy Committee's. Job is to make recommendations to the Regional Sub- the Regional School Committee, not to Amherst or Pelham. So, it be, it's it's a little, I feel like, it's a mer- it's murky, and maybe you and the Chairs can discuss, the other two Chairs can discuss. Having a joint Subcommittee with a with representation from all three committees, because we do have representation for Amherst and Pelham, but again, we're not wearing our elementary hats.
Alright, so here are my thoughts. First. Kind of coming from the other end, I will say I did learn from Attorney Terry that Amherst School Committee, if there are any policies. Or we wish to have a policy that only pertains to Amherst. We develop it ourselves and adopt it ourselves, and you know, the region isn't involved, so I assume the same for Pelham. Um I would assume that. Well. I, do we wish to have, me, I I don't know how far back to go. Does our bullying implementation plan apply to, is that? Apply to our elementary schools also? It does.
Yes, um and I I would say that I understand where Jennifer is coming from. Um, one of the things that even when we look through the policy, we're looking through it with a K twelve lens. Um, we're not really just looking through the policies with a um middle school or high school lens. And so I understand that. I would suggest that you do clarify when you're on on the Subcommittee's and that there's representation of. Every committee on the Subcommittee's um as you work through that. I would also say that I think that's where also the shift in terms of the implementation of the policies come in, and that's why I shifted to this. You know, Superintendent's Office, so we can make it age appropriate. But if there is certain policies that, and policy recommendations that may not deem such. Um, I don't see why I can't make the suggestion as well. I do know that, for example, there are some things that. Um I was gonna reach out to all three Chairs about to ask you around how do we approach it, because it's gonna need. Um, from the central office standpoint, it's gonna need approval from each committee?
Sorry, what is it? It's the anti- the bullying implement?
No, not just bullying, like process and procedures are things that need to change within within the operations of the central office. So in listening to the conversation that Jennifer is bringing forth in terms of policy and and the Subcommittee's. I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um but I also think it just needs to be clearly aligned that when we're creating these policies, some policies. Uh if, because of how a policy is an umbrella and written, um when. We create the procedures and the guidelines and implementation, we take the time in a central office to determine how it it will work. Across the grade span. Um, so that's definitely where our role comes in in the central office. So with the bullying plan, implementation plan. We put the timelines and guidelines in place that would work for, that we think are, would work for the community, but would also work for the school leadership team. In terms of rea- the reality of getting things done, the reality of communicating with parents and 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 finishing investigations. What does that look like based on the staffing that's there? And that also requires us to possibly support. Um, the implementation of the bullying plan differently from the central office level. Because, for example, Pelham is so small, they don't have a dean, they don't have, like, they they they're. They don't have an assistant principal, you know, so the support that our, the Amherst Schools have, whereas there's a principal and assistant principal. In in the schools, um. When we go to implement these policies across our three districts. We then have to turn around and figure out how the implementation plan fits the districts that we serve.
Right, right, that makes sense. Can I just point out, Jennifer, so. The current version, August twenty twenty four. The first sentence of this anti-bullying policy. Says the Amherst, Pelham, and Amherst-Pelham Regional School Districts have developed this anti-bullying policy. So, I. And the same with the.
Yeah.
And the same with the harassment, so I do think it is a. It it's going to be an Amherst District policy too, so.
No, sure.
So we, so you're not sure we have, well, why would we let the region decide what a policy? I mean, approve a policy on our behalf?
Well, well, we wouldn't, so so if it's gonna apply to Amherst, we should vote on it, but we haven't had Amherst representation, we haven't.
I understand.
This committee hasn't been involved in creating the policy. I mean, you know, I've been on the policy Subcommittee, but again, I wasn't, yeah, I don't know, I even even though, even though these words are here, I wasn't thinking of it with my. I, you know, the poli- again, the policy Subcommittee serves the Regional School Committee.
This assumes, this assumes that this, that Amherst was a part of the development of this policy. Given what this first sentence says.
It does.
No, I don't think it is implies it was.
What, how?
Yeah, no.
It says Amherst.
We have to, we have to approve it.
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I can't approve.
Alright, hold on, hold on.
Anyway, so just, I, yeah, I I'm 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 fine with taking us through this policy and I'm fine with us discussing it and voting on it. I just think that we should think about the policy Subcommittee and making sure that it represent, if. Having some more clear way or process, I mean, of of making sure that policies. That are gonna affect three districts aren't only created by a Subcommittee that is a Subcommittee of one school committee. And maybe, as I said, maybe this Subcommittee could officially. Have members, have membership and representation from all three school committees, and then also, maybe anytime a policy is presented, it's always a joint meeting. Of the three big, the three total committees.
Well, we could have another, we could have another policy committee or or recon, I don't know, redesign the one we have. On the other hand, this is our opportunity to give our input.
Sure.
So, so I don't, I, you know, why not just give the input? If you would like to consider this the first read, because we weren't thinking about it.
I I I, that's up, that's up to you as the Chair. I guess my point being that similar to the Superintendent's evaluation where if one committee. Wants this change and another committee doesn't want to change, or one committee, when there's two, when there's two different versions out there, it can get complicated. So that's why I'm saying joint, in the future, any policy that's gonna affect, that's gonna be implemented by all three districts should be, should be. Reviewed in a joint meeting of the three big committees. The same way we do for Superintendent.
Under, good, yeah.
I'm not insisting we do it now, I'm just saying for the future.
That is something I will take then to the other committee chairs, and then also something for. The policy Subcommittee, if that's the way we want to do it, then. It isn't just popped onto the agenda of the Regional Committee because we need to get all three able to meet.
Right, so the other thing is that, sorry, I'm just thinking about this more, because the policy Subcommittee is a Subcommittee of the Regional School Committee. Um, right now, it doesn't get posted like on the Town of Amherst websites. Like, uh, this, uh, uh, if there were a Subcommittee of this committee, it's a municipal committee, right, so it'd get posted on the Town of Amherst, and so. If you're following the Amherst School Committee because you have an elementary kid, you don't necessarily know that this other committee is gonna be creating a policy that would apply to you. You have a right to know about those meetings, and you have a right to attend them because they're public meetings, but you won't, you wouldn't know about it because you're only following Amherst, you know?
Except that. I'm understanding the process to require this committee to have two readings, so.
Yeah, no, you're right, but.
Yeah, I mean, that it's on the agenda for tonight, so people do know if they look.
You're right, no, you're right, but they, again, you have a a a, I I don't know, it it would be more transparent if we um. Made the Subcommittee, a Subcommittee of this committee as well, and then had the same posting, it just. It's cleaner and more transparent that way. For.
Alright, well, so here's my thinking, because.
But I'm not saying we should do anything differently tonight, I I'm just saying for the future.
Yeah, okay, um, and I think becau- I, because one possibility is that we postpone this and just ask. To meet jointly with the region whenever they want to do the second read. However, Pelham hasn't even had a first read, so, so it's getting complicated.
Definitely want to table this, because I I don't. I don't want to go to the Regional School Committee and have a second or third read when we've read it, and then we're, and then we're.
But we have different hats on.
Yeah, but the the hats are the same according to this, because whatever comes out of there is gonna be adopted by all of us.
But I think in this committee, if we re- review it, as Dr. Herman says, it's. With respect to K to sixth grade, and what do we think about? This policy as it would apply to our elementary schools. As Jennifer said, when we review it in the region, we've got a regional, you know, ju- middle and high school.
But but then, but then, might that result in competing versions?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and if there, if there were a joint meeting, then, you know, with our Amherst hats on, we could bring something up, and then something, someone from the region might say, okay, but what about, you know, it it just.
Well, I have very few comments to give on this second, so, and and and. And this isn't that we would be adopting it tonight, is just give any further comments back to the policy Subcommittee. So, um I would like, yeah, um Irv, if, have you read them, this second?
Yes, I have, and.
Do you have any comments?
I have no comments except that. Um. When you look at this, um I can't determine where I would do anything differently. If I were looking at this only from the elementary school. I just, there's nothing in there that I would do differently. Uh, so, um, given that. Uh, if we're gonna be looking at this in the region, I'd rather deal with it then rather than now. I mean, I mean, I like you guys, but I don't want to be in a meeting for, you know.
Alright, then I'll make just one or two maybe quick comments on, so first, we're looking at. Um revise, propose, draft revised policy J I C F B, which is anti-bullying. Um, so, these are for you to take back and consider in the Subcommittee. Um, I noticed a change in language from parents and guardians to caregivers, so you might just want to explain what you mean by that?
Um, that was a.
In the, in the.
Oh, in the document, okay.
Excuse me, because unless we're gonna revise all of our policies to use the same language, it it just sticks out, so. I mean, I I can see what is meant. Um. That's all.
Oh.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I could, like, some comments somewhere. Alright, and then.
Hold on a second, let me open up the other one. Sorry, I'm being slow.
Alright, so the second policy, um draft revised policy J I C F C. Which is, uh, pertains to harassment of students. Did you have any comments in this one?
No.
Alright, um I do notice the addition of the sentence, this does not apply to the delivery of curriculum, thank you, thank you for that. Um, and then. So it's, I don't know if you have the same pagination that I do, the second page. Um, the paragraph starting retaliation against a student, there's some missing words there, so that needs to be. Rewritten.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Alright, so no more comments. Thank you to the Subcommittee for working through that. Alright, uh, the next item of new business is committee self-evaluation, following up on um. The retreat, but I want to postpone this, because we only had three people at the, from this committee. At the retreat, and we don't even have a full committee tonight, so it's sort of pointless if we're talking about self-evaluation. The one we're not all here. So, um, on to future agenda planning, I will just tell you that um. This may happen in some way in conjunction with the just determining the Superintendent's goals. Um, for the year, but I would like this committee to develop its own goals, and that might in. And how, and and, for example, if we want to learn more about. Um, student's success, or, you know, strengths or weaknesses, do we want a presentation on? MCAS, or whatever, whatever measures of student achievement, you know, do we, that is our response, main responsibility. Um, do we want to have someone from M A S C come give us? A workshop on some topic of interest? Anyway, so I I I will want to devote some time at a meeting to kind of. Plugging in throughout the coming year, some presentations or committee development that. We think is necessary, or would like to have. But that aside, does anyone have something for the agenda? I figure sep- we're gonna have a busy agenda in September, but.
Yeah, I just, just in get getting to the Superintendent Evaluation. I know that the um region is going to be dealing with that on some, is it, I think, early October, I think that's what we had agreed to.
Establishing goals.
Establishing goals, alright, that when we do that, we be really specific. Uh, in terms of the goals, so that they, that they correlate with uh the standards. That uh DSC has, so that there's, you know, and and that they're actionable, et cetera, so that at the end of the time. Um, we will know. Uh, if the goals have been met or not. But everyone, including the Superintendent and the the Committee agrees up on the goals, the standards, uh standards to be met. And how that valuation process will go forward, so that there are no surprises at the end. We all know what the, what it's going to be.
Do you mean define all that in so much detail that the survey is instrument essentially is developed in, ahead of time?
Exactly, because you don't want to drop, you don't want to drop the survey onto the committee. Without the Superintendent having been part of that, so that we all agree. These should be smart goals, smart goals, uh, so that everyone knows. Where we're going, what the end looks like, and how we're gonna get to end, and what the Superintendent has to do to to. Satisfy us that she's met, met the goals, et cetera. Otherwise, it becomes this nebulous process where everyone, at the end of the time, gives their own subjective opinion as to what the Superintendent has done or has not done. I really don't want to get into that.
Okay, well, for our purposes, this committee, um, I am looking, looking ahead to that. Process whenever it happens, and I'll have to talk to the um other committee chairs, how we do that together, we do, well. We will need some goals that pertain to the Amherst Elementary Schools, obviously, or aspects of goals that might. Or aspects of goals that might um, apply to all the, all districts. Anything else, thoughts? Okay, um, then, we are done, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Irv?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of adjourning? It is unanimous, and we are adjourned at seven thirty-nine, thank you, everyone.